Five forty-five, we will call this listening session of the city council to order tonight. We have three people who had pre-registered Mark O'Brien, Sally Ness, and Karen Johnson. And I do not see a face that I don't know, so I'm assuming Mark O'Brien is not here yet. So why don't we start with Sally and then Karen, and if Mark shows up. Andrew, are you here to participate or are you here to listen? Okay, all right. So why don't we try and limit folks to, I don't know, five or six minutes? And we'll talk then, and then we can make sure we get everybody in, so.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Sally, welcome.
When I previously asked the city about fraud concerning conditional use permits, there were comments about intent and context. Again, city code provides the following for various license divisions. Fraud, misrepresentation, or false statement contained in a license application or a removal, renewal application. Fraud, misrepresentation, or false statement made in the course of carrying on that licensed occupation or business. My comment, neither of these statements include intent or context. Additionally, there was a comment made about the need to clarify the question being asked. So I'm clarifying the question. Is the following statement true or false? Fraud, misrepresentation, or false statement contained in a conditional use permit application?
As we consider it from a legal perspective, I think if you had simply not added the whole conditional use permit, Sally, I would agree with you. If you had simply said fraud, a misrepresentation of, read that without the conditional use permit part there.
Okay, so I'll ask a new question.
No, ask the previous one, but just take.
Take, yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, so question. Is the following statement true or false? Fraud, misrepresentation, or false statement contained in an application?
I think even beyond contained in an application, I think my understanding of fraud is indeed, yes, misrepresentation of false information. That is indeed fraud. I think that is correct.
Great, thank you. Okay, so then move on to.
May I qualify questions?
Please.
The, so there's intent involved in that, correct? Though, like, there has to be an intent to deceive. Like, sometimes I can make a mistake and it's not the same as intentionally deceiving.
Which I think is where misrepresentation comes in. I think misrepresentation is, that I think implies intent. I mean, incorrect statements, you're right, that is not fraud. Incorrect statements are incorrect statements, but intentionally incorrect statements or intentional misrepresentation, I believe, would consider to be fraud.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to clarify, and I don't need an answer tonight, but is there a fraud definition regarding conditional use permits within city code?
Mayor members, I looked up the links that were provided during the last listening session by Ms. Ness, and they were all in the licensing section. I didn't find similar language in other parts of our code.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to go back to some, again, the questions I asked previously, and I wasn't clear about them. So, six-six question. Did the applicants and staff report requests for council action for 8201 Park Avenue dated March 24, 2011? State hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? So again, the city manager sent everyone the staff report, but, you know, that means everyone would have to read and comprehend and can come to this conclusion. And so it would be staff that I would ask, you know, is that, is that question, you know, yes or no? Is it true? Is it yes? The conditional use permit only indicated hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Kind of yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, off the top of my head, I don't remember. I looked at it a month ago, I don't.
Okay.
Sean, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Clarification?
Clarification. So this is a shift from a license application to a staff report, and that, which I think is a qualitatively different thing, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but a license application is a specific form with specific questions on it, usually maybe one page, as opposed to a narrative about what they're going to do. And in my experience, businesses change their practices, you know? And that was one of the things we talked about with regards to the car wash place, that, you know, if they wanted to do that, if that was a concern, we may want to have a condition about that. But, you know, going back 12 years to the situation that we've talked about a few times, the council at that time decided not to have that condition, for whatever reason. They didn't feel that it was necessary, right or wrong, you know? But to conflate a license application with a staff report or even a narrative report, I don't think is fair to the applicant. They're different things.
I would agree with that. Patrick?
Yeah, and I think just, this is more of a suggestion that would help me kind of understand. So over this almost six years now, you've been sharing information about Darrell Rook and how it's overused, non-compliant, or raising concerns about the validity of the conditional use permit in general. It's over those six years, I gotta guess it's tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars of staff time that we've spent kind of doing the backend homework on that. And I feel like we've gotten so esoteric, it's to the point where it's now a Socratic exercise, which is perhaps the most costly way to approach it. So respectfully, it would help if you feel that the CUP is invalid or was done illegally, it would help me if you would just assert that. And then we could say yes or no and be done with it. And then continue if there's non-compliance or overuse of the facility, contacting environmental health so they can go out there and be able to move these things forward. But after six years, I'm completely lost where we're at on this property. And I want to make sure it gets resolved, and not only for you, but for the neighborhood, and making sure everything over there is copacetic and positive. But I just feel like we're, I'm watching tax money burn right now with beating around the bushes. So yeah, that's just my suggestion.
And in my opinion, I think these questions need to be answered so that council knows what happened, so the city knows what happens. So again, you have the staff report, and that's something staff can get back to answering yes or no. Again, the list of questions, I'll send them again. So again, I just want.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor? Sally, do you have the staff report?
Yes, and all, everyone has it. You sent it to everyone.
So why are we asking this question on the record?
So everyone here is on the record, the answer, because they all have the staff report, but, did you all read the staff report?
Let's say we did. So we, now we've read a document that was 11 years ago. What do you want us to do with that information?
Is the document not applicable anymore?
It's valid for the time period, and as council member Nelson said, it's valid for the people that were there who made the determination. So unless we want to bring it up again and we want to revisit the validity of the CUP, per Patrick's suggestion, it's done deal. Like, that's no different than I read an opinion in the paper eight years ago written by someone.
The conditional use permit goes with the land, so this conditional use permit continues to be valid, valid for the people that are in there right now.
Oh, yeah, well, that's what I'm asking about the conditional use permit, not the staff report.
Permit and the staff report.
Yeah, that's right. So is the issue with the conditional use permit or with the staff report?
It's with the process, the inaccuracies, the misconceptions. And I feel like doing it methodically like this makes the most sense. You know, because again, hearing opinions, it's like for council to know what happened back then. And this is the way. So the council was up there and they heard, they, the applicants say, you know, when the hours were going to be, the staff reports say when the hours can be, the development review committee. It was a use that was ending at nine for the larger part and then 10 for the gymnasium part.
Sally, we're past time here, and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance, but thank you. Karen, you want to join us up here, please?
I don't know.
Yep.
Legal. I need two sets of copies. Do they talk fast? Not. Thank you for letting me come.
Absolutely, thanks for being here.
Karen Johnson, and I'm one of the residents out of 60 at Penelope Apartments, which is located on Old Chocopee Road and Beard Avenue. I moved into Penelope Apartments in July of 2017. And as I'm unpacking everything, moving in, I was approached by several people of residents that said, hey, do you have a cat or a dog? And I says, no, no, I don't have any pets, what's the matter? And they said, well, the pond is contaminated. They found a dead cat laying next to the pond here at Penelope that died from drinking the pond water. And we're scared to death to even go around it. And I said, well, I can't do it now, I'm moving in, but, you know, I have some real estate background. And yes, I've been homeless to, through the market crash that happened and everything. So, you know, I'll look into it. So I did. So if I talk too fast, I'll just leave these here.
You can turn it in afterwards if you'd like.
Sure. Okay, so is the pond contaminated or not is the question? And so I've had a period of time after I got moved in, so, in May of 2020, I met with Peter Posta from HUD, a downtown office on Third Avenue in Minneapolis. And we kind of had a meeting of the minds, like, let's have the owners, let's have the residents, let's have you show up and my managers show up, and let's have a meeting. As of today's date, it's never happened. Another thing.
You said it goes back to 2017?
I moved in in 2017 and then in 2020, a few years later. I met with Peter Posta from HUD, the Minneapolis office down on Third Avenue.
Thank you, appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. I was slow, I thought I had to be done in five minutes. Okay, okay. So that did not happen to get this resolved, is the pond contaminated or not? And then I thought, okay, let's look at tax records for my real estate background. And I went to Hennepin County, I looked up Penelope. There's absolutely nothing on here at all about a pond or maintenance from the city on the pond, nothing at all. And the whole two buildings were built in 2000. So nothing from 2000 to currently, there's nothing from downtown Hennepin County. And I had another aide go through it with me, so I didn't do that on my own. I've also checked, I'll go Attorney General's Office, Travis Larson, he was going to send a letter to the owners so we could end this. That never happened. Tim Walz, governor's office, I met with his assistants, Nima, Nissian, Nico. And she said, stated, only owners of the property can request a water test done by only a Minnesota testing facility at the owner's expense in resolving our issue and fears if our retention pond is contaminated or not, it would affect our pets and our wildlife that comes and no more. Okay, that was helpful. And then I found one out of nine women that own Penelope Corporation, and her name is Peggy, I didn't have a last name, but I did have a phone number, I don't know how I found that. And she said, quote, "I'll have my husband come out, who's an architect, come to the property, check out the pond, and get back to you." As of today's date, no response. And I don't know how to get a hold of the rest of them, but I do have copies of them and these two for you to keep, of all of the people who are involved that are owners. Let's see. And I also heard rumors about two past residents who used to live at Penelope before I came, who complained to managers at Penelope voicing their pond was contaminated, and they both were evicted. I called these two parties from somebody in the other building that gave me more information about this pond as I moved in in 2017. And he had their names and numbers, so I did talk to these two ladies. And anyways, I don't want to go into that, but they didn't, nobody wants to still talk about it. Let's just move on with that. And then I found out that through all this, that there has to be a contract between the city of Bloomington and with the water service, Water Resource Service here in this building with Brian Rendell?
Rendell.
Sorry. And I did meet with him, and I again wanted a water test done. And so first of all, I took his advice. I went and found B A R R Company, who makes up all your contracts, I don't know if they still do.
Yep.
But highly secure office, I don't know how I got a hold of it, but they gave me a blank one, which amazes me. And it's like, do we have anything signed by either the city of Bloomington or the owners, or both, or anything? Because I couldn't find anything in Hennepin County. And he says, well, we can't give out that information, and I don't think we have anything. So I do have a blank copy of it. Moving on. So.
Can I ask?
We just want the owners to do the test in the pond. And do it with legitimate from the state of Minnesota. It costs like $5 or $10 tops for the testing, and you send it back, and then we had this all done. So that's it, and.
Maybe Carl could help us here, or our city attorney. So a pond on a private, private development like this, the responsibilities, the work that the city can do regarding that, you know?
I mean, I think the city's involvement was when the development happened, and the pond was constructed as a requirement of our codes. And our staff then checked to make sure it was constructed properly. And I think that they're, I'm not sure if there's an agreement or there's certainly implied as part of the approval that the property owner will maintain that in its workable condition. That's the extent that the city is involved. And so if, I know that Brian did go out and visit with you at the site and look at the pond, and he told me that it is built essentially, its current condition is the same as when it was constructed, and it is operating properly as a stormwater pond. That's not to say there is or isn't any algae or other chemicals in that pond that may be detrimental to dogs or cats. But we would not test that as a matter of practice. So that's really a private situation between the renters and their landlord.
Got it. All right.
You are absolutely correct, because yes, it has to come from the owners to do the test. And I thought, why can't this just be simplified? Just do the test.
And can I ask, is it, I mean, is there odor? Is there, does it take on algae about this time of summer every year, or?
Yes, and it, from the people when I moved in, they said, well, there's no wildlife that comes after a while. I mean, they all come in the spring, but as soon as.
As soon as the algae blooms.
Yes. Nothing, nothing happens there. And nobody goes near it there. And the other thing is that I had gotten a hold of this lady who is a master gardener, just a neighbor, that's done a huge pond renovation off of 112, Heidi. Anyways, she got us a grant to make everything around the pond. So she said, don't bring up the word contamination anymore. And here I am bringing it up. And, and she says, let's just work on the outer edge, and maybe we can get the wildlife and stuff to come back, and everything will be okay. It's not okay, because it just keeps going on with residents that live there all this time. They want the test. And I just thought, I saw your newsletter, I read it. I really read it, and it really, there's a lot of cool things coming up with these concerts and stuff. Love it. And I love living in Bloomington, and I love the bus system and blah, blah, blah. So.
Please, Jamie, go ahead.
I'm Jamie, I'm the city manager. I just want to make sure that, is this the pond that we're talking about? So these are.
Yes, that's it.
Things right?
I have a map of it, too. Yes, that's a better map.
See on the satellite overhead that it's covered with algae, and I don't have the date of when the satellite flight was flown up picture, but it's pretty clear, it's just a, it's an algae-covered pond.
We want it tested. $10 operation. And somebody here, please, just call one of these presidents and just say, can we just end it? You know, one way or another, is the whole thing.
Past our time right now, so I appreciate that. I'm going to look to Mr. Verbrugge here.
Let me just make one more, and maybe this is a question for Carl as well. Algae is often produced by too much phosphorus that is put into the water itself, right? And so that means that there's probably some sort of fertilizer that's being used there. Have you talked to the building management about looking at the products that they use for maintaining the lawn? And if they're interested in using a non-phosphorus-based product to see if they can change the chemistry in the pond itself? I think that might be an approach that you want to take.
No, we want it tested. We do want it tested. And then we can go to the management after that, but.
Any possibility for outreach from the city for best practices with the Management Association or something there?
We'll have Brian give a follow-up on. That sounds good. We'll have.
Totally happy to provide you with advice. You did go out and visit the site, and again, give advice, but it's really up to the management.
Yep. And I know, I mean, the aesthetics of an algae-covered pond are bad enough, but when you get into toxic algae, I mean, you get into blue-green algae, and yes, I know full well that it's toxic to dogs and to animals. And so it's definitely a concern, so.
I have on the last page, there's a grievance thing on the board that we have with all the rules of HUD and blah, blah, blah. Anyway, so they keep changing hands a lot. Anyways, it's Jennifer, and this is her last name, and that's on the last page of the two pages of documents I have. So you can call, like, or.
Do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Would you please sign in there when you're?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Bloomington is an amazing place, I love living there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're pretty happy, too, I think.
Andy?
Bloomington is an amazing place. I can go ahead, right?
Please, go ahead.
I didn't know if I was.
I agree.
Andy, fifth year with resident of Bloomington. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about Fairvote Minnesota. You guys know what Fairvote is in Minnesota, and we have a local branch here in Bloomington. So basically, RCV Bloomington, Fairvote donated $194,163.91 to Bloomington. The residents donated $943.57 to Bloomington residents. So out of that total amount, Fairvote actually had employees of Fairvote Bloomington, totaling close to 60,000, it was 59,544.22, right? And so RCV, as you guys know, only passed by 96 votes. And it was during the presidential election. I know some council members weren't here, you weren't here.
That is not on.
Some other council members were here during that vote, I remember very well. It only passed by 96 votes, it was very hard for the residents to get out and speak. Did a pretty good job with signage across the city. Noda RCV grassroots organized and raised $6,611.18 up against that large amount, which I have here, that $194,000 that Fairvote donated. So I want to ask like a yes or no. Did the council members that were here in 2020 know that Fairvote was donating that sizable amount of money, $194,163.91?
To who was it donated?
It was donated to RCV Bloomington.
Right, so that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a lobbying organization.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know that, I know that. I'm just asking the council members, did you guys know when you guys were making, doing the vote on RCV that Fairvote was?
We didn't make a vote on RCV.
You weren't here, so, but.
No, I'm just saying the residents voted, it was on the ballot, it wasn't a.
You guys implemented it, though, through the charter commission, so. I mean, you guys voted to bring, you know, to change the charter. Yeah, yeah, you voted to move the charter. Well, the charter changed ideally because of the voters, but I just kind of want to know. That's a lot of money. I look at that as, look at that as David versus Goliath, you know? I mean, that's, I'm looking at balance here.
We did the thing to put the power in the voter's hand.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. And it's interesting, you know, looking at the people, former council members, you know, some of the donors, you know, on there, on the list. I don't have it with me, but I can send it to you guys if you want to take a look.
Donated for what?
Oh, just donated to RCV Bloomington, that group. So I'm just talking about the monetary dollars here. That's funded by Fairvote Minnesota. That's, that's. Laura Calbone was one of the employees.
So they're employees of Fairvote?
They're employees of Fairvote, yes, yes. Correct, they're hired by Fairvote. Yep, yep.
Donate money to.
They're employees of Fairvote.
They paid employees who live in Bloomington.
They paid employees to run something that would fundamentally change the voting system here in Bloomington. So my concern, you know, is just, you know, that whole thing, that the council know about that money coming into Bloomington. It looks, it looks to me like outside money kind of coming in, you know? And I'm.
I mean, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but I also am, I mean, like, the chamber funds different things in Bloomington, businesses.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we can think and we can know, but we're talking about changing the voting system in Bloomington here. I'm just talking about a lot of money coming in from an outside source into Bloomington, so I want to know.
So if I may, Fairvote Minnesota is, it's one of a national implementation of ranked choice voting around the country. Happened in Maine, already happened in Minneapolis and St. Paul, happened in Duluth a few years ago, et cetera, et cetera. That's their job, their job is advocate for changes to the voting system.
Yep, yep, well-funded machine, looks good. Oh, yeah.
As is, for example, the Heritage Foundation, that funds a lot of stuff on the other side of that, right? I mean, part of our political system, whether we like it or not.
Yeah, well.
My question to you is, what is specific, the fact that they came to Bloomington, and they tried to get this across, and they did the work with the petitions and everything that they needed to do to get it on the voter ballot, and then we voted for it, we, as, I could say as just a citizen, because I wasn't here, and it passed. What part of that is improper in your mind?
I'm just talking about outside, a large amount of outside money coming into Bloomington. So I know it's legal, okay, I know it's legal.
Capital, the town.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just talking about outside money coming in to change the voting system. And I know that it's well-funded, don't get me wrong, I know it's well-funded.
That are, though, right? Including some you might agree with.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about residents, small amount of money, you know? So I'm going to let you guys know something, too. I've been missing for a while, right? But eight out of 10 people, when I was out door knocking, want to repeal RCV. So I'm going to let you guys know that upfront, all right? Eight out of 10 people signed that petition that I was out door knocking. So we want to talk about transparency, a lot of people don't want the system, right? And this outside money, not good. I want to move on to something different. I want to talk, I sent the mayor and a manager.
We're down to three, Sandy.
About Valley View Park this weekend.
And Mr. Verbrugge responded this afternoon.
But me, oh, I didn't see it yet, well, I figure I'll talk about it here. So one thing in the park, there's not nearly enough recycling bins, all right? When the meat was there, there should be recycling bins around.
Were they still overflowing?
They were, the garbage cans were overflowing with pop cans and bottles, and plastic bottles, so all around the pool when the swim meet was there. Now, I know the swim meet's not there every week, but more recycling bins, you know, in the pool area would be, would be a good thing. So I just, there's two in the entire pool area. Organic recycling should be implemented in the, in all the parks. I know a lot of residents aren't using the organic recycling. I want to see it, you and I talked about it, thank you.
I have an answer for you on that. Unfortunately, it's going to be really challenging, because the process of contamination is super easy to do in those situations, and it can't be monitored without a lot of.
Throw everything in a, I mean.
So that's a challenge.
Like the swim team, ton of banana peels, you know? Like swimmers eat bananas all the time. And so maybe even when the swim meet's going on, you know? I mean, there's, a lot of these people are recyclers. I'm going to tell you, you know? So the park, I just want to talk about the rundown. Here's the stretch board, if somebody gets paralyzed, it's got weeds growing up between the board and the deal, paint peeling off by the clock. I know you're proud of Valley View, you talked about it 2015. This place is, I mean, so the computer in there looks really old in the office. This is the second year in a row that the PA system, half the speakers actually work. The thing didn't work, we had to bring in like a little DJ system, you know, from, luckily a parent had one to do our announcing over there. So this is, coach said it's been six years. The parking lot is not ADA compliant, right? And there's no stripes, so we have people parking in the middle of the lot that we'd almost tow. The lot is a mess, there's weeds growing up everywhere. It needs to be either ground and relaid, re-striped, ADA compliant. It looks a mess. Lots of weeds growing up everywhere in the sidewalks. Right at the start of coming into the pool, there's a broken piece of concrete that would pose a trip and hazard, right? And this is where people could wheelchair up or potentially walk, you know, up the board. I also, in the park, and I know how this.
I know Mr. Verbrugge responded. I know Mr. Babruki responded to this, and we are at our time limit here.
Yeah.
So I'm going to, I'm going to cut you off here. I encourage you to check your email.
I will look, I will look.
Because Mr. Babruki has, Jamie has responded.